Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Diaz.
Here.
Councilman McAldowney. Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion to allow an excused absence for Mr. McAldowney and Mr. Amador. Mr. Bullock. So moved, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to go into executive session pertaining to the purposes stated on the agenda. Mr. Bullock.
I move to enter executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4) for the purpose of determining a position relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, to develop a strategy for negotiations, and to instruct negotiators relative to a potential economic development incentive.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. We are going into our executive session and we need to try to get back out here as close to 6:30 as we can. Okey dokey. I want to welcome everyone here this evening. We're going to stand for a moment of silence here in a minute, but when you do, and we'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance, but when you do, please keep in your hearts and prayers all the victims from all the terrible tragedies that have happened over the last few weeks. We had one as close as the Walmart shooting in Thornton. We had the rental truck driver that ran through some people in New York. And we just recently had another idiot kill a bunch of people in a church. And given what's going on in this country anymore, it's a sad day. And when I get a room full of people like this and we're in a government building, I think it's important, number one, to make sure that everybody's safe. And we do have security and we have our Chief of Police to make sure that those kind of things can't happen, but it doesn't mean they can't. And so, we always need to be there. I want to personally thank our Police Department for giving mutual aid to Thornton during that shooting crisis the other night. I talked to the mayor of Thornton directly and told her we would extend any efforts needed to help them out. But when it hits that close to home and with what we see happening these days in our country, it's a terrible thing and we need to think about the victims of all those terrible, heinous acts that have taken place in our United States the last couple of weeks. So please, keep those folks in mind while we have our moment of silence. And then during the pledge, please keep in mind all of our veterans. Veteran Day is coming up this week and we have two veterans on our City Council that I'm very proud of, Mr. Bullock and Mr. Teeter, both Vietnam-era veterans. And for all of our veterans that are here in the room tonight and that are in our community, I want to personally thank you for your service. All right. If everybody please join me. Moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if the staff will please pass around the microphone. Allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Oscar Madera.
Good evening. Benjamin Huesman.
Nicole Frank.
George Maxi.
Diane Evans.
Rod T. Tony.
Daniela Villarreal.
Jordan Robinett.
Anaiu Fernandez.
Susan Carbalho.
Esther Hall.
Cam Meyer.
Lieutenant Grant Sedak, South Adams County Fire.
Andrew Reeve.
Lieutenant Michael Gal.
Christina Rolf.
Derek Stockton.
Adriana Treviso.
Rodolfo Rojas.
Good evening. Lieutenant Dean Vitale, South Adams County Fire.
Lieutenant Joe Marsala.
Brandon Michaels.
Jim Hullett.
Guillermo Serna.
Battalion Chief Derrick Ross, South Adams County Fire.
Craig Machuca, South Adams Fire.
Deputy Chief Dave Beerwiler, South Adams Fire.
Division Chief Randall Wiggum, South Adams County Fire.
Bob Munzenko, South Adams County Fire.
Kevin Keller, South Adams Fire.
Nick Benenelli, South Adams Fire.
Sue Horner.
Melissa Rosback, South Adams County Fire.
Lieutenant Nick Graff, South Adams Fire.
Lieutenant Ogden Greening.
Josh Lewis.
Michael Parks.
Glenn Murray.
Patricia Murray.
Donna Jamison.
Phil Perez.
Ken, South Adams Fire.
Randy Buckle, South Adams Fire.
Alex Fairfield, South Adams Fire.
Kevin Vincel, Fire Chief, South Adams County Fire.
Erin Mooney, Coldivando.
Chris Thompson.
Shell Claymore, Economic Development, Commerce City.
Michelle Furtig, Commerce City, Economic Development.
Zach Roth.
Derek Tripp.
Glenn Batista, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Carol Harville.
Carly Seller.
Teresa Eskridge.
Will Jackson.
Jenny Lowridge.
Shirley Valentine.
Jody Vale.
Ali Gromard.
Del McCole.
Linda Fortney.
Joanne Hart.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Great. Again, thank you all for being here. You know, it's nice to see this many firemen in our council meetings. And I want to tell the firemen that you guys don't have to not come when there's not something on the agenda that pertains to the fire district. You're all welcome to be here every Monday night. But I know we do have some important things on the agenda tonight concerning the fire department, so thank you for being here. Want to get started off with proclamations and recognitions, and that's what most of the folks are here for tonight. Tonight, we're going to do things a little bit different. We have four proclamations and recognitions this evening, and we're going to go through all of those proclamations. And then after the fourth one is done, then the council will come down front and we will take pictures with the recipients of those proclamations all at one time so that we don't take up a lot of your time tonight by going back and forth behind this dais. So we'll get them all read and then we'll come down. We're going to start off with the Youth Commission recognition, and I'd like to invite the community liaison, Bella Rio, forward with some of your youth commissioners. And good evening.
Hello. Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Daniela Villarreal. I'm the community liaison for the city. I'm here to introduce the members of Commerce City Youth Commission, although this is just a very small number of the total group, but I will also just be giving a brief overview of the year ahead. This year, our first meeting was September 21st. Shortly after, we were able to onboard new members on October 5th. This year, we had a total of 14 vacancies and we received 15 applications. And out of all those applications, we were able to fill all 14 vacancies. Currently, there are a total of 20 youth members, two members of City Council, and myself, the staff liaison for the Youth Commission. Each year, the Youth Commission sets annual goals, and this year, as previous years, the Youth Commission has voted to keep on last year's goals, so we've been continuing to approve those. Briefly, just some of this year's highlights. We are continuing to work along with Youth Initiative of Adams County to advance our youth master plan. Last year, a recap, we started this, our Youth Commission focused on FAFSA completion after they looked at data and saw that there was a small number of graduation rates and they saw correlation to graduation rates and FAFSA completion. So last year, a little bit about their project, at the time around prom was happening, in order to attend, students had to have a 90% or better attendance rate at their school. However, students were able to talk to administration and were able to agree on, for those students who were on verge of being eligible to attend prom, if a student had an 85% attendance and could demonstrate evidence of FAFSA completion, then they would be eligible to attend prom. We, a lot of the planning process did take a little bit more time than what we were expecting, but just in one week total last year, our students were able to get 12 students to complete their FAFSA completion and were able to then go to prom. So that was sort of like an incentive to increase that and get students towards post-secondary Another highlight is Civic Day. Last year was the first year that we held this event. Last year was the first year that we held this event, and similar to last year, youth commissioners came up with a way to learn more about government. We took that day to invite different departments from the city and present students on the different work that happens here locally. They took a tour of the civic center and had lunch with mayor, city manager, and city attorney, so they were able to have a more one-on-one lunch with them. Our Cherry Creek Diversity Conference, which happens every February of the year, which we continue to do, and I know that the youth really enjoy that every year. And then the NLC Conference happening in March, there are six youth and two adult spots available. And the selection process continues to be decided on by our youth. And essentially, they are selected through their attendance and they also submit an essay for review, and that's how we determine our six youth participating. We engage in our state capital visit in March, and then our city, our Commerce City Youth Commission also participates in city events such as the Nine Health Fair, Memorial Day Parade, and neighborhood outreaches. So I'll just give an opportunity now to just have our youth here introduce themselves and say what school they go to.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan and I go through Prairie View High School, and I'm a freshman.
Hi, my name is Anaiu Fernandez and I attend Prairie View High School as a junior.
Great.
Well, that is all on our behalf. Thanks again.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions for the youth that are here or the liaison? First of all, I'll start off by thanking you for wanting to be a part of the group. I think it's going to be very educational, and not only that, the intent is that we help enlighten youth within our community to be able to strive to sit up here at some point in time. We need to make sure that we have people prepared to come on to council, and this learning curve that you'll get through this program, we'll help with that. Let's see, Councilwoman Carson.
Ladies, thank you for attending tonight. First of all, I'm just going to make a, a brief explanation of why we had 14 open seats. I don't want the audience out there thinking we had a mass exodus. The students have reached graduation, and so they have gone off to colleges and, and those seats have become open then. Through that, we lost, we have, now have lost all of our charter members. So it is a new chapter, and these guys are eager to move forward into the work and the, the projects that they, they want to pick to become their own. Daniela, I forget, FAFSA is federal, is it, do you remember what it stands, because I don't?
Oh, man. Essentially, is the federal aid?
Would you?
Federal Financial Aid.
There, thank you. We, we always speak in acronyms and the audience out there does not know what that stands for, so we have to speak in whole words. And thank you, though, like I said, thank you all for wanting to participate into this youth commission. For the audience out there listening, is it 14 is the age, it's eighth grade, right, that you can become a youth commission member?
It's 13 to 19 years old.
Okay. Okay, so thank you, and that's it, but I do appreciate both of you attending tonight.
You're going to have another change coming up on the youth commission. The two members of this council that serve as members to the youth commission are Mr. Bullock and Councilwoman Carson. And they will both not be with us here shortly. They are term limited, and you will have two new representatives from the council. So we'll, we'll see who that's going to be. It's going to be an interesting day tomorrow and an interesting next couple of weeks. So thank you for being here, and pay attention to the process tomorrow. I think that's a big part of what the youth commission, youth commission should be paying attention and watching with the school board elections and the city elections throughout the metro area. Thanks again. Right. All right. Now I would like to invite the Murray family to the podium. Glenn and Patty, I don't know if you have any other family with you tonight? No? Just you, that's, that's good. Come on up. I would like to ask the city attorney, please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Proclamation. Whereas agriculture plays an important historical role in the economic development of Colorado and Commerce City, and whereas chivalry Pinkney Murray and his wife Catherine began operating the 120-acre Murray Farm in 1917 near 110th and Havana Street with beef and dairy cattle as well as crops such as sugarbeets, potatoes, alfalfa, and wheat, and whereas Murray Farm leased Rocky Mountain Arsenal farmland until groundwater contamination significantly impacted their livelihood, resulting in a settlement and hemp cultivation, cultivation contract with the US Army. And whereas Pinkney and his son Benton expanded Murray Farms through the selling of hybrid seeds and equipment sales, a tradition that continues today through Benton's sons Glenn and Lyle. And whereas the 1,000-acre Murray Farm is the only working farm within Commerce City, with the Murray family donating their time and talents to civic and philanthropic causes. And whereas the state of Colorado recognized Murray Farm with the Centennial Farm Award at this year's Colorado State Fair, acknowledging the family's 100-year commitment to the state's agricultural heritage. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City honors Murray Farm and the Murray family for their community and agricultural contributions.
Thank you. I'm hoping for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to accept the proclamation as read.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, but before we vote, I want to get to some comments. I first would like to start off by saying thank you to the Murries. I've known Glenn and Lyle and Patty for a long time. I remember as a young kid going out and seeing Glenn's mother at the farm and her allowing me to hunt geese when there was nothing else out there. So growing up around here, I knew, I knew the family well. For most of the time, we seemed to get along pretty dang well. Some of the time, we had a rift now and then, but for the most part, I, I have to tell you, Glenn, you and your family have been an asset to this community. The one thing that I hated to see go away was your corn maze and what you offered to the kids, and I know why that went away. And you know, both of us don't agree with what took place there, but if it was up to me, you'd still have that operating and serve an entertainment piece to our youth. So thank you for doing what you do and continuing to do what you do for our community. And you know, Glenn is a former member of the water board and has served on many of the ditch committees, as well as I know Patty also worked for several of the ditch companies. But when, when we need resources in water, Glenn and his family are one of those resources that we look to, to help us with things like crossing ditch lines and, and what have you. And I respect them for, for that. And we want you to continue farming as long as you want to continue farming, but we're proud that you guys have made it 100 years and, and you're carrying on that family tradition. Let's see, Mr. Bullock, you have something to add?
Yes. I would also like to congratulate you on 100 years, because a family farm, not a corporate farm, family farms for 100 years is a rarity now. So for you to do that, you are one in a few. I would also like to thank you for my wife. My wife is not able to be here tonight, or she'd be sitting in the audience, but she was one of the ones that said, you know, this is something that needs to be recognized, and so let's bring it forward. And it was brought forward, so thank you and your family very much. I find it really interesting, when I come out and visit, that you give me history lessons that I never knew, but those are the things that we need to learn here, because if you don't know your history, you're either losing it or you're making a mistake and bound to make a tragic error in history. So thank you so much for your farm and you doing what you've done.
Councilwoman Carson.
Wow, congratulations. That, that is just a, a huge thing that we get to take and enjoy with you all. If you go back 100 years ago, where we all lived looks very different, but there is one common factor that has stayed the same, and that's the Murray Farm. So thank you very much. I can't tell you how much pleasure it brings me every day when I turn down 112th and there's an active working farm right there. That way of life is, is something that is going by the wayside, and I very much appreciate those of you who stay within that farming. Food is very important to us, and so without farmers, I don't know where we would be. I'm not happy that we have very little ag land left, but I, I do very much appreciate the fact that you all are willing to continue working that farm and being part of this community. You are a valuable part of this community, and we, we honor you today, so thank you.
Mr. Teeter.
I'd also like to thank Patty and Glenn for what they've done with their 100 years and the family staying in the business. For the firemen out there, I just want to make sure that you know that Station 7 sits on Glenn's property at one time, and I sent, we sent one of our councilmen, Bob Kenny, over there on the, on our fire board to talk to Glenn, and I don't know what kind of negotiations Bob did with Glenn over there, but we ended up with that corner over there where Station 7 sits right now, so this is the gentleman, so when you see him, that allowed us to build our firehouse there.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Thank you very much, Murries, for coming in, and congratulations on 100 years. And Glenn, I've been knowing you for quite some time, since I got here in 2004. Remember taking my kids over to your corn maze, and they had a blast. Also, you know, you're advocate for our city as far as water, you served on the water, on the water board. We appreciate your time served on there as well, and thanks for still being here, so we learned a lot from you. Thank you.
Saying no more discussion. Have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motions carry. I want to turn the floor over to the Murries. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, the real thanks needs to go Deborah Bullock. She put a lot into this. The Historical Society gave a presentation here some time back. Deborah came out and we spent a lot of time together. Matter of fact, pictures that, years and years of pictures that, to be honest with you, a lot of which I never went through, that I didn't know we had, but that was, that was shown at the Historical Society, and it was pretty interesting. A lot of those were shown, what the history, how things changed, my father, my grandfather, and the change like that. Another one is, is JD Carson. JD is the one that had approached me as far as bringing it here to you folks tonight, and so JD, thank you to, to you also for, for doing that. And I, I guess I do have a few comments that, that surprised me a little bit or some change, and if you'd have asked me about us standing here about five or six years ago, I'd have said probably not. And, and the reason for that is we are the only active farmer, I am, my brother and I myself, we are the only active farmers in the city of Commerce City. And what the city did to us a few years ago, and I, if we have, I'm not going to mention it right now, but if you have some time, the members of the council and new council members, I'd really like to talk to you, the impact, what that would have had, I didn't think we could survive it, to be honest with you. But luckily, with, with term limits, Mr. Mayor, I thank you, part of the city council change, and city manager, we did get some relief on some things that allowed us to remain, so I respect you guys for doing, common sense did prevail. So, but I was really concerned a few years back, I didn't think we'd be here today, so... But again, Renee, make sure you, you thank Deborah, because she did put a lot into it. Okay, thank you.
Great. Can, we'll let Patty speak, but before you, I don't want you to go sit down, because I want to ask the Historical Society to come up and speak at this time as well. So Patty, do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, we'll have the Historical.
Just thank you to the council.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm Esther Hall, and I also want to thank JD for stepping up and letting his family be recognized. The, the whole state knows about them with their 100 years, and our historical did a, a very good honor to this family, because they've been here and so dedicated, and now the city. So I think that's such a, a great statement, that they are full and around to be recognized. Great history, this family not only is a farmer, but they're involved in Platt Valley Hospital, they helped build the school in Henderson, they, they never stopped, it just goes on forever, and we were so glad to be able to recognize that last May. And so Pam Meyer is also here, and Sheila Harris, we're all three officers of the Historical. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pam?
No, just as, Deborah unfortunately couldn't be here, but she sure wanted us to come and, you know, let you know how, how pleased we are and how much the history of the farm means to the city, and so thank you for recognizing the Murray Farms.
Absolutely. Yes, Councilwoman Carson.
Since the Historical Society's here, maybe we need to add a page to that coloring book, huh?
It's in the works.
It is.
It is in the works. I'm working with the school.
Fabulous.
Have, have Murray Farms coloring pages in the, in the coloring book. Well, I, I want to thank you again, all of you, and to the Murries, thank you for being a staple in this community for so many years. We appreciate it. And don't go anywhere, because we'll have you up for a picture in a little bit. All right, now, we take on National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. I'd like to invite the Adams County Food Bank Director, Linda King, and Cultivando Executive Director, Erin Mooney, to the podium, please.
I don't think Linda can be here. Word on the street is she had a fender bender, so...
Hopefully, it wasn't from that terrible traffic issue that BNSF is causing on Highway 2 in Rosemary. That's for you, Guillermo, just so you know. But thank you, Erin, for being here. I'd like to now ask the city attorney to read the proclamation.
Whereas for over 25 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry, including the shortage of affordable housing for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations, and whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City hereby proclaims November 11 through 19, 2017, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private or public nonprofit service entities.
Thank you. I'm hoping for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
So move.
I'm hoping for a second. Mr. Teeter. I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation, but before we get to that, we'll go to discussion. I want to thank you for what you're doing. I know we look at our community and we look at the surrounding communities and we see a lot more people homeless. And the one thing I can tell you is that when the economy gets good, there's a lot less people that have the opportunity to have a place to live, and we're seeing that right now. So it's a double-edged sword, and it is very hard for us as elected officials and for residents to deal with some of the negative effects that come along with homelessness. So it would be great if everybody had a home, and we, we appreciate you doing what you do to try to make that happen. So I want to see if any of the rest of the council have any comments to make before I turn it over to Erin. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rudy, for coming in here, and also Linda... Yes, thank you, Ms. Moody, for coming in here, and also Linda King's behalf. I know several times I've been over to the Food Bank to volunteer, and I encourage everyone living in Commerce City to go over and help out Linda of the Food Bank. You'd be surprised how many people need those services on a daily basis. When that Food Bank opens up in the morning, in the afternoon, there's people lined up outside. There's no day goes unnoticed in the need of the folks in Commerce City, so thank you for being here.
Anyone else? Mr. Bullock.
I also would like to thank you for being here. A lot of people don't realize that hunger and homelessness go together. The area median income for the Denver metro area is $58,000 for one person. In order to be 60% of AMI, you take 60% of that, and that takes you down to around between $32,000 and $35,000. And then, 30% of that money is used for housing. That's just housing. And so, what's left over is used for food and everything else. Now, if you're one person, that works. If you're one person working, making that, and you have a family of four, you're pretty well up the creek, because after you do everything, and if everybody doesn't know this, everything has gone up except wages. The wages that are now being paid are basically wages from 1982. So, if you, but everything that goes along with it that you buy is at current rate. So, a lot of people, we are not catching up, and we won't catch up for a long time. And as the mayor said, as the economy gets better, you know, salaries do increase, but they really aren't keeping up with inflation. So, I want to thank anyone and everyone that has anything to do with helping the homeless or people that need food and their shelter, because if we weren't doing it, you would see a lot bigger problem than we have there now, and a lot of people see the problem every day, but just magnify that times 10. So, Aaron, thank you for being here today. Thank you so much.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Aaron, podium's yours.
Mine?
Yours, you'll take it home with you tonight.
I'm out of here. Well, first of all, I just want to say that this, it feels strange standing here by myself, accepting this proclamation, because this, these two issues are so huge, and so intractable, and so systemic, that Cultivoondo does our piece, but we are one tiny slice of the pie. So, first of all, I really want to commend the work and the support of the council on these two issues. I have to commend Linda King's work. I think, if I remember correctly, they gave away 2.4 million pounds of food last year. It's incredible. If the Adams County Food Bank weren't here giving away food, I think, four days a week, we would have a lot, a lot of families hurting more than they are. I think it's really important to keep in mind about these two issues, that they're largely not visible. We have a lot of hungry families that you wouldn't know to look at them, and a lot, homelessness is not always the typical, you know, one man with a backpack on the corner. Homelessness in Adams County often looks a lot more complicated, where it's multiple families living together in one small, one-bedroom apartment or mobile home, where you have six, seven, or eight, and upwards, folks living in a one-bedroom, living in a car, living, so it's not necessarily the under the bridge or on the street corner, but I think that it's about 12% of Adams 14 students are currently experiencing homelessness. And this issue is only getting worse as housing prices go up. We're seeing more and more families collapse in and move in with each other, and honestly, move out of state. I think it's really important to note that in Commerce City, Latino families and mixed document, mixed documentation status families carry a higher burden of our hunger and homelessness rates. That's not to say that other folks are not dealing with the problem, just there's a disproportionate impact on more, on Latino families. And so, whatever solutions we come up with, have to really keep that in mind, and we need innovative solutions. We have to, we have to be moving quickly and thinking about systemic and policy options to get more funding into our community to build low-income housing. How can we get more grant money to support some of the collaborative food systems work that's happening? We're doing our part, but, you know, we're, we're small, and this is going to take lots of us. These issues are pretty intractable. So, thank you for your commitment to it. Thank you for all that you've done up to this point. We're in this fight for the long haul, and thank you.
A couple of statistics that I think are important for everybody. Growing up here, I, just the other day, was at an ACED, which is Adams County Economic Development Executive Board meeting. They gave us a couple of statistics. One statistic is that in all of Adams County, there's only two single-family detached homes that value less than $200,000. And growing up here, that really shocks me. Secondly, we are the highest housing market in the United States without a coastline, and that, that says a lot for Colorado to be number one without a coastline. The downside to that is, for many, many years, we had legislation called the Construction Defect Bill, that would not allow multifamily development for sale, development, because of the burden on the insurance side of it. So, we didn't have any developers developing that type of product. And now, we have a lot of very expensive homes, and not a lot of homes that new, young, working families can move into. And what we're seeing is a lot of people in our community faced with parking issues, because there's so many people living in a home that's designed for one family and not multiple families. So, it creates an effect on the rest of the community, because we're providing services for more, many more people, and it, it puts negative impacts on their neighbors. So, with that, I'll leave you with those statistics, and please don't go anywhere. We'll have you up to give you your proclamation here in just a little bit. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All righty. Next one, South Adams County Fire Protection District Proclamation. I want to invite the members of the fire district who are in the audience to the podium. You don't all have to come up, but if you want to, you're more than welcome. I know we have, we have room. Nobody in the audience would be able to see, but at minimum, I think the president of the board and the chief, and some of your other chiefs, if you want, Kevin, come on up.
The whole board?
The whole board. Past chiefs, we'll get you all up here. Machuga and Randy, come on up, guys. I think they should all come up, too.
I think you should all just.
And just line the sides, huh? Just line the sides up. Come on, make a showing.
Yes. Let the, you're on TV, so let the city see.
Yeah, you're on TV.
Come on, Fire Department.
We'll make it work. So, uh.
I don't realize how many of you are here, as you stand.
Yeah. The people on TV can't, probably can't tell until you all get up here. But we're glad you're all here tonight.
And if any of you other people want to pretend like you're in the Fire Department.
Quite an achievement for the fire district, the 75th anniversary of South Adams Volunteer Fire District. I can remember back when I was a kid, but I can't remember back as far as this district goes. There's some folks still around that helped with the start of it. I want to get to the proclamation real quick, and then I'll get to my comments. I'm open for a mo, let me see, no, let's start with having the attorney read the proclamation. Go ahead.
Whereas the South Adams County Fire Department is celebrating the department's incredible history and legacy to commemorate 75 years in service to the community, and whereas the department protects more than 75 square miles of Adams County, including most of Commerce City in Colorado, and has eight fire stations throughout the city, and whereas the department responds to roughly 8,000 calls per year and covers the only refinery in the state, and whereas career and volunteer members are dedicated to protecting the people of Commerce City, serving with pride and demonstrating excellence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City recognizes the South Adams County Fire Department and honors the past 75 years of its service to the community.
All right, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to accept the proclamation for the 75 years of the South Adams County Fire Department.
Mr. Teeter.
Second that.
All right, I have a second, a motion and a second. Now, I'm going to get to give my comments. Fire Department means a lot, not, not just to me, but to this community. However, growing up with my dad involved with the government for many, many years, I remember folks like Lonnie Sobitzki, and, and a lot of the old timers, Jim Machuga, and I know a lot of the firemen today. Not as many of the young, newer firemen, but I respect everything that each one of you do for our community. It's important to have what we have today, and to have a fire department that is an ISO rating of two, which is unheard of. To have that, my hat goes off to the department for achieving that goal. I could tell you, Kevin, your dad would be very proud, and he know that. So, I have, I have one story that I have to tell that happened with me with a fire truck one day. I went over to King Supers. Me and my wife were not married very long, and I think my daughter was about four years old. She's 25 now, so it was over 20 years ago. There was a guy by the name Rocky Teeter that was a fireman, and he had the ladder truck up, and they had the boots to donate for muscular dystrophy, right? And he had the ladder up, and he started talking to me. And next thing I know, Rocky is turning pure white, and he couldn't talk anymore, and I was like, what's going on? And I turned around, and my four-year-old daughter was at the top of the extended ladder. I mean, at the top. And Rocky started to freak out because he knew something bad was going to happen. And he calmly started talking to her, and she just calmly walked right back down the ladder. And I think after that, Rocky didn't allow any more kids on the fire truck with the ladder extended. But I know Rocky watches a lot of these council meetings, and I know that one, that was one day that he was, he was scared. But I have to tell you guys, I went to the 75th anniversary dinner the other night. He did an outstanding job. It was great to see you celebrate the way you did. I got to see a fireman that I haven't seen for a long time by the name of Dennis Scriven. And the reason I know Dennis is I worked with him at the city back in the early 90s in the street department, and me and him were running, doing traffic work. We were in the traffic department, setting up speed counts and signs and stuff, and a lady with three kids had run off the road on 62nd Avenue, just west of Holly, and she had hit a tree stump that was in between the sidewalk and the fence of the dog track, and she had broke her arm, and all the kids were standing up in the backseat when she hit this, this stump. And I'll never forget, because I always knew Dennis Scriven as a coworker, but he turned into a fireman as soon as we come around the corner, which was really interesting to see, and I'll never forget that moment, because we pulled up, steam's coming out of the, out of the engine of the car, the lady's still inside, and the kids are all over the backseat from, from colliding into the stump. And Dennis gets out, and he calmly walks over, opens the door, grabs the lady out, helps her get down to the ground, and he turns around and he goes, Sean, I'll take care of the lady with the broken arm. You take care of all those kids. And at that moment, I was thinking, boy, Dennis, don't you think we ought to call the Fire Department? But he had it all under control, and literally, he sat there and told me how to take their pulse and do the stuff that I didn't know how to do at the time while he was dealing with the lady with the broken arm. So, you think about those little things that happened to you throughout growing up in this community, the times that you engaged with the Fire Department at whatever time you did engage with them, and all of the times that I've engaged with the Fire Department have been very, very good, except for one. I accidentally lit one of the neighbor's houses on fire when I was a kid. My dad was extremely unhappy, and I'll never forget. Uh, do what? Yeah, I did start mine on fire, but I didn't need the Fire Department, J.D. So, however, that was one of those days that I learned to respect fire a lot more as a kid. But you guys do a lot for our community. You save a lot of lives, and I don't think the average resident realizes how many lives you save. And you just keep on doing what you do. It's just in your DNA. It's what you do. As many of you know, my son went through the academy, was going to be a fireman, and it's just not for everybody. But for those of you who it is for, God bless you, because you have a tough job, and you need to be respected and honored once in a while. And today's that day. I want to be able to give you that honor. I'm going to ask the council if they have any comments. Councilwoman Carson.
You know, my time here is just about up, so I'm going to take all of my time I can. First of all, thank you all for coming, and thank you for standing. I have sat here for eight years and have watched this department change and move into a department that I cannot believe the changes that you've accomplished in this short period of time. I see one female firefighter's face in there. Thank you. But no, it is amazing. You all are such professionals. It's fabulous. Our homeowners' insurance should be going down because of our ISO rating. You all have done a fabulous job here. And I will tell you, I know all three of the candidates running for my seat, and I will guarantee you, you will have the support continue from this seat, no matter who wins. But you guys, the mayor is correct. He's telling stories, and those stories aren't that long ago. The young faces that are standing out there know a whole different world in firefighting, because your jobs have changed tremendously. The fires that you fight now, the calls that you go on are totally different than what they used to be. So, anyway, you have protected our community, and you have kept us safe. When we call 911, you come as fast as you possibly can and provide us with every, every step that we need to get through whatever it is that's affecting us when we call you. Other than that, you guys are great community members. Please continue coming to our Music in the Parks. It's, it's always a boost when the Fire Department is there attending. So, thank you. But you guys are great community members, and there's no way that I can tell you thank you enough. So, that's, that's just it. But thanks a lot for coming tonight.
Mr. Bullock.
I also want to thank you and congratulate you. I also went to the 75th annual, the 75th celebration, and it was a great time to be had by all, and I want to thank you for what you do, because you honestly do something that a lot of people can't do. And when I first moved to the city, they asked me if I wanted to be a volunteer fireman, and I asked them, will I see any dead bodies? And they said, yes. And I said, okay, that means no. So, I mean, I know my limitations right off the bat. Didn't want to see them. So, I can thank you for what you do, because you definitely can do things that I could not do. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Teeter.
Mr. Teeter. Now, they know how proud I am of them tonight. With me having 34 years on the Fire Department and over 13,000 fire calls, I could sit up here and tell stories all night. But I am. But I am extremely proud, 75 years, and I'm just happy that Ken and his staff had to turn this thing over to a paid department, and I didn't have to deal with that. That was one thing I did not want to do, was turn it from a volunteer to a paid. But the times changed. We knew that we outgrew our ability as volunteers to get that quick response from 47th all the way up to 120th. We were lacking in response times, and it was time to turn this Commerce City, or South Adams Fire Department, into a paid department. And I am also extremely proud of each and every one of you, and I do mingle with you quite a little bit. And I want to also give my appreciation that when I walk into the firehouse, you still treat me with the respect that I think I deserve and for the time I did put in, you know, and being a chief. We expect that out of our volunteers, and we expect it out of our paid people to recognize the people that came before you. It was great seeing a lot of people this last weekend, especially the old fire chiefs that are still around. We had quite a few come from out of state to come back, and I really did enjoy the 75th also. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, I want to thank you guys for being here tonight. And I do see many of you at my other job, and the community speaks very highly of our fire district, and I do appreciate 5A being passed. That helped us as far as our paid firefighters, and I know quite a bit of volunteer firefighters when I moved here back in 2004. So I do appreciate everything that South Adams has done from the administration building, which is just outside our city hall here, to Fire Station Two, which I visited last week. Renovation of that, awesome job. The quarters over there, I mean, that's someplace where you can go relax and then, you know, make sure you're also on call, and everybody's on high alert. So I do appreciate everything, from the men to the women on the crew, and thanks for being here.
All right, with that said, I want to turn the podium over to the chief. Oh, no, wait, we've got to vote on this proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, chief, you can have the podium.
Man, that's a lot of responsibility for 75 years. Man, I tell you, take a look. This is our future right in front of us and our past. Without us realizing the past, would there never be a future. So, you know, these crew that we have today, they're outstanding people. And even the past, it's good to see Rick, you know, it's good to see Lonnie Sabitzki coming to town, and, you know, most of all, some of the people, the originals, like Bob Hutchings and Harla Leeper, which received the lifetime achievement awards. Those people are the pioneers of the department, and especially this district board. This district board that sits up here right now has gone through 12 years of the most change this department probably will ever see in its history. And with that said, you know, they've gone through a couple of chiefs, the first paid fire chief, which would have been Ron LaPenta, took the brunt of a lot of this change, and I had some, you know, big feet to fill when I came into this position, and it's not easy. But, you know, having a crew like I have today, it makes it a lot easier, especially with the district board and everybody from past to present, and we appreciate the recognition from the city council. That means a lot, you know, 75 years, you know, I'm a second-generation firefighter, and even the firefighters in the heavens are proud.
Great, well, thank you all. Since we're at the end of our proclamations, and you're all standing, you need to all come up these stairs and wrap around here, and we'll come down and give you your proclamation, take some pictures so you don't have to sit down and do it a second time.
You better go on your floor and leave them all on the stage.
No, I'm just going to set these up here, and then I'll clear this one down.
Sean, let's all go on the floor, get them on top.
That's fine.
Okay, chief, don't stand at the back. I don't know what that means.
I'm usually the shortest, so I'm always in front.
All right, now we get the merge back.
All right, now, next, we have citizens' communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before, may come before, city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. City policy prohibits campaigning during citizen communication. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. All right. Looking at the list, two of the folks from the Historical Society already spoke and already have left, so I have one person on the list. When I call your name, please come to the podium. Diane Evans. Good evening.
Good evening. Diane Evans, 1261 Southeast 9th Avenue, Deerfield Beach, Florida. This is in regards to the property at 72nd and Highway Two. As you know, recently, you took it as eminent domain, and will be out of business as of beginning of January. However, in the process of that, I learned that you were taking it for a turn lane, which I want to know what safety measures you're taking for that corner. I was there for 48 years, 365 days a year, open. I know the traffic patterns, and yet I find on this that there was never a traffic survey done on this property, nor was there a safety survey done on it. And I would like to know what safety measures you plan on putting in there when you put a turn lane in there for, so say, for 18-wheelers to go around there, which will be going from 72nd Avenue, which will be a slower road, onto Highway Two, which I know cars go up there and trucks 50, 60 miles an hour, although they're not supposed to, and you're putting an 18-wheeler going on from a slow lane into a fast lane with no acceleration lane whatsoever there. And I'd like to know what you intend to do about that.
Well, you know what, first of all, I need to say, I have to be careful because I do know that this is still under litigation, so I can't get involved with some of the topics. So I got to look to the city, I got to look to the city attorney and make sure he keeps me on track.
Yeah.
When it comes to the safety measures, because we are widening Highway Two, and even without widening Highway Two, there's a fire station right down the road. And for my entire life, the whole time I've lived in Commerce City, a fire truck cannot come out of that station and go to Highway Two and turn right. They have to go down Magnolia Street and come all the way back around if there was to be a fire where they had to get around to. So from safety purposes, that corner never had the proper turn radius. Because of the city widening Highway Two, it used to belong to the state of Colorado. The state of Colorado did a divulsion, and the city of Commerce City has taken over ownership of Highway Two. So part of the reason it was never done before was because it was under the state's authority. Now it's under the city's authority, and we are widening that. I don't know as though we're in building it to meet the needs of 18-wheelers turning that corner. But I could tell you, with that being four-laneed and knowing the turning radius that is there, there has been times where I actually witnessed vehicles go through your lot behind the signal pole, through your lot while people were working on cars, and cut that corner. And that always has been extremely dangerous. So from that aspect, yes, I think it's a safety issue, and that's the reason why with Highway Two being acquired by the city, it is a safety issue. And every one of these firemen in the back rows, no, they can't get around that corner with a fire truck. So, yeah, with the improvements on Highway Two, that's the reasoning for having to take the property and widen the turn radius. I have to be careful because I don't want to get any more into it than that. I wanted to make sure I answered your question, and the city attorney's doing this to me, and I know it's because there is still litigation ongoing concerning the condemnation of that corner property, and we need to let the lawyers deal with that from that perspective. But I wanted to give you a straight and honest answer from me tonight, that you couldn't turn that corner before, and it was because it was the state's. Now it's ours, we want to make it safer for everybody who travels 72nd.
But how about regular people going around there? Okay, the fire trucks have to go around there, but what safety measures are you going to take for people using that corner? Because like you said, I know from being there for 48 years how people zoomed through our lot, like you say, when people were working. And they don't bother to stop really to see the traffic coming up from Highway Two, and I mean, that's going across a piece of property. When you've got a turn lane there, what measures are you going to put there to maybe slow them down before they go out onto Highway Two? Because somebody's going to get killed there. I've watched that traffic enough for 48 years to know that if you were to put a legal turn lane there with nothing there to control them, to stop and look and turn their necks, because that's what they've got to do when they get to that point, they've literally got to turn around like that. I mean, what safety measures are you going to put there for them?
Well, I would have to say that's going to be the same as any of our other signals out, like out here on Quebec. They're signalized intersections, and like you said, people go 60 miles an hour down the road, and they're breaking the law. Some people will go through that intersection and cause an accident because they're breaking the law. If you follow the law when it comes to signalized intersections, you have to stop, it has to be clear before you go, and we can't force people to do that, and that's the only reason we have accidents. If we could stop people from disobeying the law, we would have a lot less accidents. So the signal itself is what is to protect that turn movement. And, you know, that's what it comes down to, is it's a signalized intersection. If it was not signalized, I'd have a little more difficult time answering your question.
One last question I have for you is, what do you plan on doing with the rest of the property that you're only going to use part of it for the turn lane? And of course, then there's the building. What are you going to use that other part of the property for?
From my understanding, the council has not went over that and come up with an answer for that. I couldn't tell you what the rest of the property will be used for. I just know we couldn't just take a piece of the property and leave the business because there wasn't enough room left over after we cut the piece off. So we'll have to figure that out at a later date. But at this time, my understanding is we don't have a use for the rest of the property as of right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Good to see you again. All righty. Is there anyone else in the audience who showed up to speak on the citizen communication that did not get their name put down on the list before I move on? Please raise your hand if you were here for that reason. Seeing no one else, we're moving on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for September 5th, 2017 special meeting. I need a motion and a second to allow councilmembers Teeter and Douglas to abstain from voting on the September 5th meeting minutes because of their excused absence. Mr. Bullock.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 5th. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of September 5th, 2017.
Thank you, Councilwoman Elliott.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item, September 11th, 2017 special meeting minutes. I'm open for a motion and a second to allow for councilmembers Douglas to abstain, just Douglas, I guess, to abstain from voting on September 11th, 2017 minutes because of his excused absence. Golly, Steve, you're not here very often. I'm open for that motion, Mr. Bullock.
Move to allow... Move to allow Councilman Douglas to abstain from the September 11th meeting.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 11th. Councilwoman Carson.
Move to approve minutes from September 11th, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 11th special meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we come to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedurals, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are seven items listed under the consent agenda. One item, Resolution 2017-121, has been updated with a corrected legal description made available at the back of the room and will be considered included in the consent agenda unless there is an objection from this council. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read, please read the titles of the consent agenda items and take a, and then I'll take a roll call vote.
Ordinance 2143, an ordinance authorizing the lease of vehicles and the execution by the city of a master equity lease agreement with Enterprise FM Trust and related documents, authorizing the city manager to execute related schedules, setting forth parameters and restrictions, and providing for other related matters. Ordinance 2148, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the U.S. Department of Justice grant in the amount of $699,721 for the Sexual Assault Task Force and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2149, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Health Foundation grant in the amount of $20,000 for the Healthy Places Commerce City program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2017-113, resolution approving award of contract for Bison Ridge Recreation Center furniture procurement and installation. Resolution 2017-119, resolution removing members from various boards and commissions. Resolution 2017-121, resolution approving grant of aneasement to Public Service Company of Colorado at Eagle Point Recreation Center. Resolution 2017-120, resolution amending council policy number CP-12 regarding council use of recreation facilities, Buffalo Run Golf Course and Park facilities.
Thank you. So a second and a motion and a second, and the titles have all been read, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. J.D., you haven't voted.
Well.
Getting short.
I left checked out.
All righty. For the record, consent agenda is approved unanimously by the City Council this evening. Now we move into public hearings. We have Resolution 2017-28, which is our budget. I'm going to reopen that public hearing, and I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience would like to come forward and address the council on this matter. Seeing none. Close the public hearing. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-28. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-28.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-28, resolution adopting the 2018 budget and certification of the mill levy for the city of Commerce City.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. I want to thank our finance department and the staff that, and all the department heads that helped put this budget together. All right, now we move into Resolution 2017-105, plus Ordinance AN-246-17, plus Ordinance Z-896-11-12-16-17, plus Resolution 2017-106. You know, when I first started, it was either a resolution or an ordinance or something, but there wasn't six of them jammed into one. But tonight, we're going to do six in one. All right, it looks like four. The following four items will be heard under one presentation but voted on separately. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite staff forward to make their presentation and the city attorney to inquire as to the annexation. So if you will, please.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I have just a couple of questions for the annexation. Can you please state your name and position for the record?
Jenny Oxmacher, planner.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Are you familiar with the annexation case file AN24617 and the annexation petition in the area proposed to be annexed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has the city council adopted a plan for the area to be annexed pursuant to CRS 31121051E?
Yes.
Is at least 1/6 of the area to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city?
Yes, it is.
Does a community of interest exist between the areas proposed to be annexed and the city?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed urbanized, or will they be urbanized in the near future?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed integrated or capable of being integrated with the city?
Yes.
Have all the owners of the lands to be annexed signed the petition?
Yes.
Have annexation proceedings been commenced for any of the land proposed to be annexed to any other municipality?
No, they have not.
Will the proposed annexation result in detachment of area from any school district and the attachment of such area to another school district?
No.
Do the annexation petitions meet the requirements of law?
Yes, it does.
Will the proposed annexations have the effect of extending the boundaries of the city more than three miles in any direction from any point of such boundary in one year?
No, it will not.
Is the entire width of any street or alley proposed to be annexed included in the annexation?
Yes, it is.
And have all the requirements of CRS 3112104, CRS 3112105, and Section 30 of Article 2 of the state constitution been satisfied with respect to this annexation?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. The next cases before you are AN246, Z896, MD101, and Resolution 217-99. The applicant, DIA Tech Center, is looking to do an annexation and annexation zoning of the subject property, include that property into the DIA Tech Center Metropolitan District, and there's also a land exchange proposed between the city and the DIA Tech Center development. The location of the property is approximately East 81st Avenue, west of Tower Road, and directly east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. Here's the subject property. We've got Tower Road here, we've got 81st Avenue down here. It's about 28 acres and is currently zoned Adams County A3. We have the Rocky Mountain Arsenal directly to the west. To the north is a quarter section of unincorporated and primarily vacant Adams County property. And to the south and east is part, two parts of the DIA Tech Center development that are planned for employment uses. There's an existing McLean development down here, a van rental company in this area, and then the 7-Eleven at the corner. The future land use plan for this site calls out for DIA technology uses, which allows for a mix of light industrial, distribution, offices, flex space, R&amp;D, and production uses. Here's the aerial photo. There's not a lot going on on the site currently. So we're looking at four different requests. First, the annexation of the subject property into Commerce City, the annexation zoning of the subject property into the DIA Tech Center PUD. The future development of the property is going to be as a portion of the DIA Tech Center development known as Nexus at DIA, and by including it into this PUD, it's going to streamline the future development of the property. There is nothing proposed at this time, though. They're also looking to include the property into the Metro District and then the land exchange that I mentioned. So let's start with the annexation request. The property has the required 1/6 contiguity for annexation. For the zoning, it's going to be as part of the proposed second amendment, the DIA Tech Center PUD. It's going to include this property into what's known as Planning Area 10 and Planning Area 11, and it will lay out the uses allowed for the site as well as the bulk requirements for the development. So when we zone a property that's recently annexed, we have three options for how it gets zoned. In this case, we're zoning it with the most compatible zoning for the city's comprehensive designation. So the DIA Tech Center PUD is going to allow for those future employment in DIA technology uses that are indicated in the comprehensive plan. For the Metro District, all the applicant is wishing to do is include this additional property into the service plan. They're not proposing any additional changes to the service plan at this time. It was originally approved back in 2011. For the land use exchange, it's not directly related to the annexation and zoning. It's related to the infrastructure that will serve this property, which is known as, will be known as East 83rd Avenue, and it will connect to Tower on the east end, and then it will terminate prior to the arsenal. So the applicant is preparing to construct this roadway, and the proposed alignment will create disconnections of property between Commerce City and the DIA Tech Center, which will be resolved by exchanging these small portions of property between the two entities. So the Commerce City property that we're talking about tonight was originally dedicated to the city from the DIA Tech Center as part of the Second Creek Floodplain when they plotted filing 1. It's a requirement of the Land Development Code to dedicate Floodplain to the city at time of plat. So this is the city's property that we'll be discussing for the exchange. The exchange portion will be just here directly adjacent to Tower Road, and as you can see, it was rather crudely dimensioned off, which is part of the problem that creates the alignment issue for 83rd Avenue. So the city will be giving DIA Tech Center approximately 2,800 square feet of land, and the city will be receiving approximately 10,000 square feet from the DIA Tech Center development. This will allow East 83rd Avenue to be built without repeated property cross, or repeatedly crossing property lines and creating small disconnected islands of property. It will also allow for easier maintenance and a quicker construction of the roadway. So in this photo, you can see the red property is currently city property that's adjacent to the Second Creek Floodplain. The blue hatched property is DIA Tech Center property, these two areas, and then the green hatched property is property that the city will be giving DIA Tech Center, and this blue hatched property is the property the city will be receiving from DIA Tech Center. As of this date, staff has not received any requests for additional information on the public hearing cases. For the annexation, the development review team recommends approval of the annexation. For the annexation zoning, on October 2nd, the planning commission held a public hearing and considered the case and voted 5 to 0 to forward the annexation zoning request to council with a recommendation of approval. For the Metro District inclusion, the development review team recommends city council approve the request. And for the land exchange, the development review team also recommends approval. Staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Does the city council have any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none. I'd like to invite the applicant forward. Good evening, Mr. Thompson.
Hi, it's Chris Thompson, 5753 Shasta Circle, Littleton, Colorado. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for considering our annexation, zoning, and land trade. We look forward to developing the property commercial uses, there are no residential uses, and bringing quality development and jobs to Commerce City, and I'm available for any questions.
I have one comment. Looks like we're getting the better end of the trade.
Well, I keep saying, my wife says I'm over, too.
Just glad it worked out in our benefit. So is there any questions for Mr. Thompson at this time from the council? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this matter? Mr. Sernak, please come forward.
Gier Muserna 14122 is the 102nd place, Commerce City, Colorado, 8022. Just one question, basically, is how to, and how can we get participation from the school districts to be able to take advantage of all this data stuff that comes around for our senior citizens as well as our children that are going to go into a technology point of view and be hired somehow, some way, to get experience? Every time we look at industry with technology, we should be taking advantage as to how these companies and all this type of stuff help our children with scholarships, with involvement, with Commerce City, and our school districts. I think that it's important that we keep our children upfront when it comes to utilizing some of the new technologies that may be coming down the line and how they're going to be utilized so that our districts can understand what industry needs in order to provide our children with good, let's say, upfront, okay, knowledge of what these companies need so that we can provide that for our children as they participate. And I'm not just talking District 14, but 27J in perspective to the surroundings of these technologies. And I don't know if they have any intention of doing this or not, but it would be interesting if they would somehow start to develop that with some of these industries that want to come or trade, okay, especially Denver in perspective to how we get involved with that type of employment or training for our kids to be able to apply for some of these jobs. That's, that's the only concern.
I'll do my best to answer that question, Mr. Sernak. Given the high-tech opportunities that we'll see at the DIA Tech Center, we also know that there's pads available for hotel development and other things. This city council just met with the School District 14 the other night, and I brought it up that a lot of the businesses that are currently in the city, one of them being Suncor, Motor Carriers Association, several of them come to us and ask for the opportunity to work with school districts in the area to provide, to ask the district to provide some curriculum that will allow these students to be able to come out of high school in full employment in some of these positions. So those discussions are constantly ongoing, and we just had that discussion at the school board, school district, city council joint meeting the other night to talk about that, as well as there, we're working on the dog track piece. There is a piece of land set aside for higher education opportunity, for technical training of some sort. We don't know what sort yet. But yes, we know we have a lot of industrial opportunities for employment in our community. We want our students to be able to take advantage of that when they get out of high school, and these businesses want the employees to be trained and ready to go coming out of high school. So I think it's partnerships between the businesses and the school district, but we continue to work on that when we meet together as different entities working for the betterment of our entire community. So thank you for bringing that up. It is on our mind.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience would like to come forward and address the council on the issue before us? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now I'm open for a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-105. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-105.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
Of that, I have that motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-105, resolution making findings effect by the city council of the city of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to the eligibility of annexation to the city of Commerce City of the property with PIN 17230000105, generally located north of East 81st Avenue, west of Tower Road, and directly east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN24617.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion is carried. All right, now I'm open for a motion and a second to introduce ordinance AN-246-17 by council as seated. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce ordinance AN246-17 by council. Move to introduce ordinance AN 246-17 by council as seated.
Thank you. How about Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Ordinance AN 24617, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached Tier Two and made a part hereof, generally located north of East 81st Avenue, west of Tower Road, and directly east of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, PIN 17230000105, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. AN 246-17 is passed unanimously by the city council this evening. Now, I'm open for a motion in a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on Case Z-896-11-12-16-17. Let's see, Councilwoman Carson.
Move to approve the facts and findings of the Planning Commission on Z-896-11-12-16-17.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance Z-896-11-12-16-17. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce ordinance Z-896-11-12-16-17 by council as seated on first reading.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance approving the DIA Tech Center PUD Zone Document Amendment Number Two.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the ordinance is approved unanimously by council this evening. Now, I'm open for a motion in a second to approve the Resolution 2017-108. Councilwoman Elliott.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Clarify, it's 106, Resolution 2017-106, Resolution consenting to the inclusion.
I have it wrong on my paperwork here.
Oh, is it? Okay, thank you. Resolution consenting to inclusion of property in the service area of the DIATC Metropolitan District.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we're moving to resolutions. Have Resolution 2017-99. Is there anyone on council that has any questions that were not answered during the public hearing? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this item? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2017-99. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-99.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2017-99, Resolution approving an agreement for the exchange of real property.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Now, we have ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2146. I'd invite the city attorney to give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I have a presentation available. Council has discussed this ordinance regarding fire impact fees at length at study sessions. So, if council had questions or wanted me to go through the presentation, I could. Otherwise, I want to make sure.
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Anybody require a presentation? Seeing none. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this item? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance 2146 by council as seated. Mr. Bullock.
Move to introduce ordinance 2146 on first reading. Council is seated.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, and I want to ask for discussion before we move forward. This was a trying piece for this council, and I'm glad that a large majority of the fire department's still here tonight. We know that you all need the tools to do your job to protect this city, and we want you to have those tools. And we also have to balance economic development in our city as well so that we can have the services, restaurants, shopping, things of those natures that we need, and we have to stay competitive. It's unfortunate that the state legislature put this on our backs to be the approving body. However, tonight, I think after sitting with the fire department and talking and seeing some frustrations back and forth, we have come to some resolve. I have always stood and fought for everything that the departments in our community need to be successful, and tonight I will be voting yes and supporting ordinance 2146 so that you guys have the tools you need. I know it could have been more, but it also could have been less, and I am very thankful that we worked out the agreement that we have, and I will be supporting because I want you guys to be able to continue to have that ISO rating of two, and I want you to be able to continue to serve the community at the levels that you continue to serve them or better. If anyone else on council has any discussion? Seeing none. I will ask the city attorney to read the title.
Ordinance 2146, an ordinance amending the Land Development Code and enacting and authorizing the collection of a development fee for fire and emergency services.
I'll ask for a roll call vote. Oh, yes, I will. This includes both the Brighton Fire District as well as South Adams. For the record, ordinance 2146 is approved unanimously by the city council tonight. Congratulations to the fire department, and we wish you the best. Thank you for being here. All right, moving on. Ordinance 2152. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this item? Seeing none. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address the council on this item? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance 2152, council as seated. Mr., let's see, let's go with Councilwoman Carson.
Move to introduce ordinance 2152 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to introduce ordinance 2152 by council as seated. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Ordinance 2152, an ordinance amending the 2017 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the State of Colorado Department of Natural Resources funding agreement in the amount of $1,160,000 for the Sand Creek Open Space Remediation and Restoration Project and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, 2152 is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. Now, we move into presentations, and we start with the Senior Advisory Committee. I'll have Derek Tripp come forward and start it off.
My name's Derek Tripp, and I am the Recreation Supervisor in charge of Senior Services, and we are back here today with the Senior Advisory Committee to report on our goal accomplishments for 2017. The first picture there is a trip we took to Burlington, Colorado, actually, earlier in the fall. All right. So, the Senior Advisory Committee's purpose is to advise and serve as an information source to the senior population, to communicate requests to the Parks and Recreation Department to assist with our fundraising efforts and to provide outreach services. From a staff perspective, they are a big help. We have a lot of large events that happen throughout the year that they not only plan, but they organize, and then they're helping out the event as well. We have programs, we've had educational sessions that have all come right out of those groups. The three different committees within the entire Senior Advisory Committee area are the Outreach Committee, the Program Wellness Committee, and the Umbrella Committee. There were 18 seats that were filled this past year after our recruitment period in December of 2016, and we completed a total of 12 action items in 2017. The ideas were actually from the focus group event that we typically have in early January that's open to the entire public. We have an open forum, we get them in groups, we have white papers, and then we take down the ideas in that way. The Advisory Committee, then, they organize and prioritize those ideas, and then the groups select a few of those ideas to turn into our goals for the year. And coming up here to speak first is going to be Joanne Vale speaking about the Program
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. My name is Joanne Vale, and I belong to the Program Wellness Committee. Our members consist of Thelma Cole, Linda Forney, Ollie Grimard, Joanne Hart, Carol Harville, Sue Horner, Jenny Lovridge, Claire McKee, Donna Nunley, Beth Scott, Shirley Valentine, and our staff members are Glenn, Batista, and Zach Roth. Our purpose: provide feedback, suggestions, and program ideas regarding the older adult senior program, especially focusing on the upcoming brochure. The Program Wellness Committee, 2017 accomplishments. First, Senior Center Talent Show. The Talent Show event will take place Thursday evening, November 30th, at 6:00 PM at the Red Rose Event Center. This event is part of our Senior Wellness Week during the last week of November. Included will be senior acts as well as assistance from our youth advisory committee. Event will be heavily marketed to the public, and I'd like to add you all are invited to this. Holiday meals, number two. Senior Advisory Committee members have set a goal of delivering 50 meals to homebound seniors within Commerce City. Committee members are working on a new location that can provide meals that include turkey with all the fixings. Number three, dance and karaoke events. Successful senior dance mixer held on Friday, October 13th, at Eagle Point Recreation Center. Karaoke with root beer floats event took place on Friday, November 3rd. Number four, youth and senior advisory collaboration. Youth Advisory Committee will be helping at the Talent Show event with three performances. Senior and youth advisory committees held a spring ideals sharing event. Number five, non-traditional therapy class. A coloring group, art therapy, held a successful kickoff event. The therapy combines meditative and social benefits. A music therapy class was also held on September 8th. That was very well received. And now, I would like to present George Maxi.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I am George Maxi, representing the Senior Outreach Committee. My teammates are John Myers, Sandy Schmuller, Tilly Villarreal, Linda Wolf, Frances Zacek, plus Jody Hardy and Derek Tripp from staff. Our purpose: to interact with our staff and the community in our efforts to market the Senior Center, older adult center, midlife center, whatever people are comfortable with as a name. An ongoing project, the Good Friends Scholarship Fund, is now supporting the Christmas meals deliveries to those seniors without involved families and with transportation issues keeping them homebound. These funds are also being used to provide free coffee, ordinary coffee, to anyone visiting the Senior Center. Other prime actions in our marketing outreach have been using all-weather banners at various locations to advertise events. That effort coupled with the ever-expanding newsletters, pamphlets, and other printed materials to reach the community. This has also included delivery to the senior populated locations within the city. Lastly, our effort to increase the visibility of the center to the broader community at the outreach in the park events. Where do we go from here? Ever forward. Thank you for your time and interest. It's now my privilege to introduce Jenny Lovridge.
Thank you, George. Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Jenny Lovridge. I'm representing the Umbrella Committee. In our committee, we have Claire McKee, George Maxi, Joanne Vale, Linda Wolf, and I. Staff, we have Derek Tripp. The Umbrella Committee, our purpose is to enhance the communication between our committees during our quarterly updates. Our accomplishments: all the committees met for the mid-year workshop to share the information, to brainstorm, to establish the universal intent. We had representatives to speak at our umbrella meetings on various and variety topics to receive better understanding of what is going on in the community. We also began a partnership with the Youth Advisory Committee Group to work together. They are being involved in our Talent Show on November 30th. They also helped with the dance mixer, which was a great success. They were also in some educational classes. And once again, I would like to thank you for letting us inform you on our updates, on our projects, because if it wasn't for the city, we wouldn't have these programs to enhance our seniors. And now, I would like to invite the rest of the Advisory Committee to come up so if you have any questions to ask. Committees?
Well, first of all, thank you to all of you that participate at the Senior Center and for the committee. It's great that you do so much for all of our residents, not just for seniors, but to put the word out, to come and join in all the fun that you all have. And now that we're going to be having a new rec center added, we're going to double the effort. So, we know you're up for the challenge. I watched George going up and down the stairs out there a little bit ago. I know he has it in him to get that word out. But we truly appreciate everything you all do, including those that are still sitting over there. Anyone on council have anything they would like to add? Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for the presentation tonight. After sitting through this long council meeting, when we meet Thursday night at our senior commission meeting, I think we ought to put on our agenda some way to always move the seniors more towards the top of our agenda that night so we can get you out of here. that night, so we can get you out of here a little sooner.
You know, Mr. Teeter, especially after we had to turn our clocks yesterday, it, for some reason, I'm sitting up here rubbing my eye, and I can't figure it out. Well, it's normally, it's later than what we, our bodies are used to it being later than what it is. Councilwoman Carson?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for these presentations that you give us. In the eight years I've sat up here and watched, the growth that you all have done and your presentations have just become remarkable. And you all give so much of your time to this, to make it a successful program. So, thank you. And I've enjoyed knowing all of you and dancing with all of you. So, keep moving. And thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next presentation. When it's capital program update, I'd like to invite the KIPCAK members forward to give their presentation. Here they come.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's past my bedtime, you guys. Come on.
You know what? We still have four meetings after this.
I know. I saw that. Good luck to you. Yeah. Anyway, my name is Susan Carver Hall, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Capital Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Committee, also known as KIPCAK. Our mission is to advise the city and inform and engage the community in capital improvement projects. The last quarter has once again flown by with projects moving quickly. The new recreation center structure is rapidly moving along, and it was great seeing it firsthand at last week's hard hat tour with staff and council. I'm also excited for the existing recreation center renovation kickoff in January. These recreation center projects are quickly becoming a reality, as the community and you, city council, have given these projects official names, with Eagle Point for the current recreation center and Bison Ridge for the new recreation center. Things are really coming together, and it's exciting to be a part of it. One quick point I'd like to let council know about is the word about KIPCAK is spreading very rapidly, and we're very happy to report we have three new members that have joined us in the last quarter. So, I guess we're doing something right. Now, I'd like to hand it over to my co-chair, Jennifer Allen Thomas.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff for creating the Citizen Advisory Committee. It's been wonderful to see how the program works from an insider perspective. I'm thrilled that the widening of Tower Road is coming to an end and hope to attend a soon-to-be-announced construction completion event. This is such an important project for both our community and business owners in the area. Staff and construction crews have been working fast and furiously on this and the Highway 2 widening project. It's amazing to see that the five-year program is over three quarters complete. Now, I'd like to give the floor to the Director of the Program, Director of Program Management, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of city council. It's great to see you here again for our fourteenth quarterly update. Hard to believe that much time has passed, but on behalf of the city management team and our colleagues in Public Works and Parks and Recreation and my colleague Danielle Yearsley, we're pleased to be here to give you this quick report. I know you've seen this many times before, but for those who may be watching from home, just as a reminder, this is the Measure 2K approved by voters in the fall of 2013, committed to five projects in five years. Program goals and objectives were to build high-quality facilities with low, long-term operations and maintenance costs, spend the taxpayer dollars wisely, and complete projects on time. First, start quickly with the tax revenue. This is funded with a 1% sales and use tax, and you can see that through August of this year, 9.37 million in revenues have been received. Our target for the year is 11.5 million. This looks like we're trending to the positive side, so that's a positive sign, and that will go into the fund balance. On the overall schedule, you can see we're at the end of, well, we're currently reporting out through Q3 of 2017 is represented by the red line. We're nearly complete with the Tower Road widening. The new recreation center that you've all had a chance to tour here recently is still tracking for the spring of 2018. And we've got the existing recreation center design all underway, and you all have had a chance to play a significant role in all of that, and we greatly appreciate that. If you look at the volume of work over time as measured by the dollars, you can see that we're currently tracking the program, seventy-six percent complete with twenty-four percent left to go. It's a little bit misleading, though, because a lot of the startup work we're going to be doing for the new recreation center, the Parks and Recreation team is working really, really hard behind the scenes with your information technology team, your human resources, communications. Again, it's a team sport, so there's an awful lot of work that you don't see represented by just the volume of design and construction dollars on this chart. So, it's going to be a busy finish to 2017 and a very busy early 2018. If you look at the CIP projects, and we'll just focus on those that are in blue in the Public Works, 2017 pavement management program is ongoing. Highway 2 widening is continuing to move on track for completion in the spring of 2018. And in the Parks and Recreation, the natural resources damages project, Sand Creek, Earth is moving, and the Northern Loop Trail alignment and design work is underway. So, some of the highlights. So, for Q3, on the bond program, Measure 2K, you've all had a chance to see the, we issued the RFP for the Bison Ridge Recreation Center furniture. You got to see the various charts that showed, and the palettes that showed the different types and colors. We also issued a change order for the Tower Road T-88 drainage construction. On the design side, we completed the Eagle Point design development package, and that's now completed. We're moving on into construction documents. We continued the Bison Ridge Recreation Center construction. I hope you all saw the great progress of the tour. We're nearing completion, and actually are complete now. We're recommending substantial completion for the Bison Ridge Recreation Center roadway infrastructure. That's been a really key component to get ready for the traffic that's going to start making their way to the new recreation center. On the construction side, the paving and lighting along Tower Road is continued. You can see this long-range photo here that shows you the great progress that's being made there. On the CIP front, the negotiations on the IGA have continued, and I'm pleased to say that as of tonight, it's gone through second reading at Denver City Council. So, that's moving forward in advance. So, we're getting all the prerequisites to starting that construction out of the way, and that'll be some good news that we report out at our Q4 update. We've also issued the Tower Pena ramp 90% and 100% designed, so things are moving very well on that front also. On the CIP front, I know many of you travel Highway 2, and the construction and paving on that work continues. Again, trajectory for completion in the spring of 2018. Look ahead. Well, there's still a lot to look ahead to, as I just mentioned a few slides ago. So, on the design front, we'll be completing the construction design packages, one and two, for Eagle Point, and those will be coming to city council here in the next month. Contracting and procurement, the construction GMP contract for Eagle Point, Package One, that'll be the foundations to expand the footprint of the facility for the therapy pool and auditorium area. We'll be awarding Bison Ridge Furniture Contract, which you saw this evening, and issue the exercise equipment RFPs. On the construction front, the Enabling Works Utility Relocation at the Eagle Point, we're working with the utility companies right now to try to get some of the advanced utility work done, as again is a prerequisite for the construction work to start later this year. We're working very hard, as you saw, to close in now the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. So, it's winter. Weather is starting to come our way, but by buttoning up that facility, we'll be able to maintain the progress and the schedule for that facility. Substantial completion on Bison Ridge Recreation Center roadway infrastructure, as I just mentioned, that is already underway, and substantial completion on Tower Road in Q4, and that's a very exciting and milestone for the large Public Works project that was a component of Measure 2K. On the CIP front, the RTD North Metro Station design improvements, those are ongoing in coordination with RTD. Contracting, we're going to be awarding the construction and CM services for the Tower Pena ramp project, and continuing Highway 2 construction and continuing to work and finishing out the 2017 asphalt mill and overlay. So, that is our update. We'd be happy to take any questions you might have. Our fifteenth installment of this quarterly report will be in February of 2018, and we'll have a lot more progress to report out there. So, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Well, thank you, first of all, for the report. We were all, or most of us, were at the Bison Ridge Recreation Center tour the other day. Glad to see the progress where it's at. The only question I would have, and it's probably more for our staff or Public Works Department, now that we're coming into more of the wintertime scenario and potentially snow for tomorrow, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, today I received quite a few complaints concerning Rosemary because of the BNSF had it closed down. Knowing that we have potential snow on its way, if it doesn't come tomorrow, it's coming. Are we prepared in these construction zones to manage the plowing activity and the safety of the public? It's important I ask that so that the residents that are watching at home and in the audience can see that it's a top issue for us to make sure that with all this construction going on, that we still have plans to maintain these roads and keep our safety top priority.
So, the answer, the short answer is yes. There's preparations underway. The road work construction that was underway last year at this time, there were provisions made between the contracting team and Public Works and the Division of Responsibility to assure that the roads were going to be plowed and passable.
Great. And 64th Avenue and the Monaco area, I noticed the other day, the mill and overlay project was going on. Hopefully, that's all buttoned up. But I still want to make sure that we're concerned about the left-turn options on some of those roads along Monaco. That's been brought up several times. So, I want to reiterate, since we're talking about some of the CIP mill and overlay operations, that we continue to look for left-turn movements along Monaco to make it easier for people that are trying to turn. The traffic has gotten a lot worse because of the amount of people that have migrated into the metropolitan area. We still have a lot of migratory traffic going through our community, and you can see that when you drive down Highway 2 at any given time of day, but especially rush hour, it's backed up. And I'm hopeful that the improvements that we're making are going to open that up and help people get to and from where they're going in a little better rate. But I would also caution people that it sometimes has to get worse before it gets better. We've gotten past the Tower Road primary issues. However, we know Central I-70 is going to start, and when Central I-70 starts, I know that our community is going to take a brunt of that traffic that's trying to avoid I-70 from an east-west pattern. So, I expect 56th, 72nd, 64th, 60th, some of these roadways that we have residents that live along are going to see increases in traffic. I hope it's not as bad as what I'm anticipating, but I do expect to see additional increases because of other roadway improvements in the metro area. Is there anyone else on council that has any comments or questions at this time? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation. I had a question about, and I know you bring this up, on Highway 2, the construction on the west side of the road between 88th and all the way up to like 96th. There's several areas where the road's going to drop off. There isn't a kind of, I say, extension of the road being paved at an angle where it's safe, because that's been a problem on Highway 2. We have some areas where the pavement drops off a couple, I mean, a foot in some areas. And what's the plan on that west side shoulder to make sure the safety's improved, because there are some areas that it's a good three to five feet drop off?
And I'll turn to Danielle Yearsley, my colleague, overseeing that project.
Danielle, can you talk into the microphone? Yeah, so at the actual pavement edge, you put a safety shape in that will help with people who go off. But where you see those big drop offs, they probably just haven't installed the guardrail there yet. So, there's been an in-depth analysis done for roadside safety, and so guardrail probably is going to go in in those locations. You're noticing those big drop offs.
Right. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you.
The only last thing I want to mention is a lot of the residents are concerned about what happens with the rest of Tower Road. And I know, you know, everything in your presentation and what we've been doing, our portion of Tower Road will be completed by the end of the year. There's a portion of Tower Road that belongs to Denver, and I'm saying this for the residents in the audience and at home. There's a portion of Tower Road that belongs to Denver between 81st Avenue up to Pena. That is only two, one lane each direction. We are working with Denver as negotiations. We are going to build their portion between 81st and Pena next year, which will also include the construction of the on-ramp to Pena. A lot of people think that, oh, my God, we're going to have this pinch point. We will, but it's only because of having to work with Denver to get their portion done that it is going to be a pinch point for a short period of time. We should be under construction and working on that piece of tower next year. That will also look like our piece of tower, and all four lanes will go through under Pena all the way up to, I believe it's 56th Avenue. So, that piece will be done, but it won't be done as part of our project. It will be next year's project tied in with Denver and tied in with the Pena on-ramp. So, that, I want to make that clear to our residents, that it will get done, but it's not part of the 2K piece that we had planned for, the tower piece that will be completed this year. So, I know everybody's been patiently waiting for that on-ramp, and nobody wants the pinch point, and neither do we. And we have a way to rectify that, and it was through partnerships with Denver to get that done. And it just wasn't as easy as us doing it. We had to rely upon the approvals, as you said, that are going before Denver Council tonight for second reading. But that work will be done. It just is not tied to the 2K piece for our portion. With that said, I don't see any other comments or questions. I want to thank you and KIPCAK, the co-chairs, for coming in tonight and giving the presentation and updating our residents. We look forward to the next report.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council. And the KIPCAK team, Susan and Jennifer, have, of course, the construction video.
Oh, we love that. Come on up.
I gotta show you the thing. It's progressing very quickly, and Jennifer and I agree, you know, we faced all the elements the other day with you. And it's just since last July, I'm just overwhelmed how much is, how big it is and how much has been done. So, we just want to show you the time lapse that's been happening the last few months.
Great. That is extremely impressive, and, you know, I have to say it, I say it pretty often, I think there's more going on with construction and development of city services in this community than there ever has been at any given time in all the years that I grew up here. So I'm proud of that, and I'm proud that we're going to be able to extend more of these services to more of our residents. So thank you to Kipkak, keep these videos coming. I know when we have that grand opening, we can loop that and have the whole video running all the time as a time lapse of that construction. So thanks again for the update, and we'll look forward to the next one. Councilwoman Carson wants to talk.
Every time I see these videos or I get an update, I'm telling you, it is just so exciting. So I just want to say one last time, thank you to the citizens of Commerce City for approving 2K. It will change our lives in this city, so thank you.
It will. All righty, next item on the agenda. 2017, third quarter work plan update. I'm going to invite Deputy City Manager Smith to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council, thank you. Tonight, we're doing our third quarter update for your strategic plan. There was a lot of information that we put in your packet for you to review this evening, and so if you wish to follow along with your packet, I'm going to be working out of the document you see on the screen here, which is the executive report. There are some other slides and economic indicator reports that are included in what was our old format, but all that data and information's also contained in this executive report, and that's what I'll be working out of this evening. Just as a review for the community and any audience members, your strategic plan does have five levels, starting with five city council goals, and those, those goals are informed by the community, and they are certainly the expectations that you've placed within our organization. There are 20 outcomes in support of those five city council goals, there's 103 objectives, and 281 strategies, and 643 tactics. That's an awful lot of work that goes on, on a daily basis within the city to work towards accomplishing your five goals. I'm happy to report at the end of the third quarter, all things in that plan are 81% on track, about three quarters of the way through the year. Just a little background on how this update is structured for you this evening, there is a summary provided, a high-level summary at every outcome level, so there are 20 summaries in this report for each of those outcome areas. Obviously, we're not going to be able to go through all of those this evening, but they are contained in the report for your reference, and we'd be happy to answer any questions this evening after we hit a few highlights. In any area within the report where you see disruption, which is pictured as red or yellow on the status wheel, within the outcome area, the objective is actually included. So for example, here on this first outcome, which is reflective of the fourth city council goal, we have some red indicated as disruption, and listed here for you is the reason for that. The Irondale Neighborhood Plan, which was originally scheduled to be done by December 31st of this year, has been delayed. We've had to reschedule some of that work, and there's a new target date for completion that's established in the second quarter of 2018, and that's reflected by this red color that is up here. If we move forward to outcome, outcome 1.2, you'll see 81% of all the objectives in that area are on track. In outcome area 1.3, we have three objectives that support that outcome area, and that is 69% on track, and this is a great example of how the report reports out on disruption, so I just want to point this out to you. Here, we have what looks like a fairly low percentage, 69%, but if you look at objective 1.3.3, where we were attempting to attract one new hotel in 2017, the good news is, we have a America's Best Value Inn and Suites plan to build a 49,000 square foot hotel at I-76 and 88th Avenue. It will be four stories tall with 100 rooms, but it won't be done, the hotel groundbreaking won't take place until 2018. So because we originally stated that goal as a 17 goal, that is why you begin to see some of this disruption that exists here. Jumping ahead in the work plan, I'm going to move forward to outcome area, city council goal number two, outcome area 2.4. 72% on track, and in this outcome area, you will note that our technology was available during this, this third quarter, 99.75% of the time. This is a great measure of how much our system is up and running, how it's available both for the public to use, but also for our staff to use. That is an excellent rating for our technology department and something I wanted to share with you. On the other hand, we do have some disruption here. Objective 2.4.4 talks about 85% of the Channel Eight availability being planned outside of these maintenance outages, and in this particular objective, we have been delayed in our project as a result of awaiting some bidding from Comcast to relocate some services to this building from Adams County School District 14, and that's the reason for that delay, largely out of our control, but you can see how that reports out into our plan. Jumping ahead to outcome point, 2.6, about financial compliance and stability, I just wanted to point out here that as of the end of September, our revenue collection from tax audit is $2,363,573. We have a small team of tax auditors at this time, we have some vacant positions in that work area, and they are out working very hard, not only to conduct audits and collect revenue, but also to educate businesses about our tax code and to try to gain voluntary compliance with that code. Outcome, city council goal three, jumping forward to outcome 3.1. You all are aware from our meeting earlier this evening, we are working on the Mile High Greyhound Park and the milestones that are associated with that. Just for the community's benefit, we have agreements reached with four of the six taxing entities within that URA, and Regen LLC has a letter of intent with residential builder Dell West for the development of that property. In outcome 3.2, increase the available pedestrian and bicycle transportation network. Again, you see some disruption here, a relatively low percentage, and this is associated with some of the due dates we put on these projects. Those projects are moving forward, and there are additional trails and paths being constructed. Some of them are adjacent to the RTD Light Rail Station, so the delay of that project has resulted in a delay in some of our infrastructure being constructed as well. In outcome 3.3, I wanted to point out that this is a city council priority with respect to the intersection and interchange at 120th and Highway 85. CDOT has undertaken a project to complete the environmental review and 30% design completion of this interchange in association with a larger effort to evaluate the entire segment of Highway 85 between I-76 and 124th Avenue. Staff continues to work towards council's goal, knowing this is a, oh. I'm losing power quickly. I think perhaps the city attorney has had something to do with that message from my computer, I'm not sure. Moving along. Do you want to use your power? No? We're very close to the end, I appreciate you all sticking with me. All the voter-approved projects under outcome 3.4.4 are on track to be completed on time. As you heard from the third quarter capital project update, we are working to finish the design with a number of partners on 112th Avenue from Potomac to Chambers, and that part of the project is something that's, that phase of the project's something still under consideration. Important to note that the city this year so far is on track for over 800 new residential units. As a result, we, they've had about 1,140 building permits that were issued, 51 land cases, staff was able to complete these cases and permits with a 99.8% compliance rate. So in spite of the increase in the workload that that unit has received, they continue to do so at a great rate. Mowing and weed management levels of service, now that we're through the mowing season, were achieved during that part of our year, so we're very pleased with that. Moving on to city council goal number four, and specifically, I want to just, for the community's benefit, hit on outcome number 4.1, which again shows some disruption in this area, and that's largely a result of the police department being informed by the Department of Justice that they will not be receiving a comprehensive report. Many of the items within the police department's work plan were predicated on that report being completed, and they are now working on developing a new list of actions and their strategic plan to move the department forward, but as a result of not receiving that report, our plan reflects some disruption in that area. Finally, I'll skip ahead to council goal number five. Give you just a moment, which is 86% on track. There are 10 objectives that, that support outcome area 5.1, and within that particular area, we have our RIM project, and there is an update for you there on our RIM project. We implemented a five-year CIP process this year with city council's help during the budget process. I thought it might be interesting for you to know that our Granicus website has received 1,700 video stream views, 1,248 internal and 452 external views, and 90% of all that traffic's coming from the internet. So a lot of people getting public information from the city off of our new webpage, and specifically from this Granicus software. So that concludes our third quarter report for 2017, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Does the council have any questions for Troy at this time? Your lights lit up, Jody. That's why I look at you, saying non-thank-you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we get into administrative council business. We don't have the executive session, but I do have one item I want to bring forward for administrative council business. If I could have Chief Nichols please come up to the podium. I want to take this opportunity with the city council to congratulate you on your appointment as our chief of police. You're no longer the intern, you're the new chief of police for Commerce City, and I want to thank you as, as an intern, you really helped the structure of the department. You know, we get to talk to a lot of the officers on the street, and they, they let us know what's going on that's good, what's going on that's bad, and it seems like the morale is up. A lot of people have told me that you're a cop's cop, and they, they like the fact, they like the fact that you, you communicate with them in a sense that they understand. So it has been a long time and a long frustration for us to see that kind of gelling between a chief of police and with the officers and detectives within the department. I think you're going to be a great chief of police for the city Commerce City, I want to welcome you and, and congratulate you on your new position, so we're glad to keep you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. I didn't have anything prepared.
That's all right, this was, this was off the cuff, chief.
Just want to say thank you. I am pleased to be able to serve the residents and the Commerce City community. I'm looking forward to the next few years to seeing what we can get accomplished and doing the people's work, so I am available. We'll be doing some outreach after the holiday season is over, get out to the community and talk about some of the changes that the DOJ, the impacts that having on the police department, and outlaying our plan moving forward. So we're putting together a fairly comprehensive plan that I think will make the citizens of Commerce City feel pretty proud about what we're going to try to accomplish in the next few years, so thank you again.
Yep, we appreciate that, and we're glad that we were able to solidify this chief thing, and now we can move forward, and I truly believe you're the right guy, and I want to thank Mr. McBroom for seeing that as well and, and giving you the opportunity. So we're glad to have you and glad to keep you.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other administrative council business this evening? Steve, Steve, push your button.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, it came on earlier, there you go, it flashed. I don't know if you push it twice or what you're doing, but it don't stay on. There it stayed on.
All right.
Go ahead.
It's a six-year effort there.
I guess.
Just, if we could explain the construction that's happening over on 104th and Tower, it's the T-88, correct, the construction?
I believe so, I don't know, I don't see Maria here, we can double check, and if that's what it is, we can get you a little bit of detail on what exactly is occurring over there.
Rumors out there that it's some sort of retail operation, and just want to make sure we could correct that.
That, well, I do know that is not the case. I do believe you're right, it's related to the, that large storm drainage project that we refer to as T-88.
Okay. Another thing I want to bring up, since Reunion Elementary School is, is open, very heavily traveled now, and it's almost like when you wait to, wait to stop sign, depends on what time of the day, it's like there's a parade, just on, just hundreds of cars, well, at least 75. And so I know we had study there earlier this summer, but I think now we need to take action, actually put a four-way stop, not on Parkside South, but Parkside North and Landmark. If you go out there, you will experience this in the morning and then the afternoon, heavily amount of traffic that's going through there. So the folks who are trying to use Landmark coming either east or west on Parkside North are having to wait extremely, extreme long, I mean, a long time in order to get across there, and plus there's children who are trying to cross the street with their parents, either walking or riding their bike, and they're as well... walking or riding their bike, and they're as well waiting. But as far as their waiting is, the cars that are trying to cut across. And I've seen a couple near misses in an intersection, which is not good to see. And then, great job on Parks Public Works, the contract with remilling and putting the new asphalt on Chambers. The problem I'm hearing out there is it's great lines as far as where people need to go, where people need to merge, but for folks who normally drive that corridor going from 120th, Chambers going south, southbound, you get to the one entrance to the west, it's a continuous right lane. You get to the second one going south and it says right turn must make, right turn must make, right lane must make right turn, let me get this right. People are not used to that. So what's happening is the folks coming out of that complex, they have a turning lane to go into a safe lane, but the folks who normally drive that, Chambers Drive, are not used to that right lane must turn right. So they're continuing to drive south and we're going to have some accidents or just, if we're going to have maybe one of those signs out there for a couple of weeks, just to notify people that this is now a right lane, right turn. We appreciate that.
All right. Any other council administrative business? Saying none. We're going to reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. We did distribute via email this afternoon, this week's edition of the city manager update. We do have an update on some strip being requested on Old Quebec near 72nd Avenue, an update on the request to research the idea of appointing a city historian. And we're also letting council members know about the changing winter hours for the Bison Grill. It changes typically this time of year, so it will open at 8:00 a.m. And we had the information in there about the appointment of Clint Nichols, which we've talked about already. So I was always happy to answer any questions that council members might have about the update.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I just, I sent an update today about a positive outcome of some litigation for the city, but other than that, nothing additional to your report.
Thank you. I'll get into my report. You know, we had a three-week span since our last council meeting because of the fifth Monday. We had the area boards meeting, which went well. I'm glad that we continue to have those meetings. It's the fire district, the school district, Tri-County Health, Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge. Let's see who else shows up. Kids First shows up. Quite a few agencies and it's important we keep those relationships working well together. I did meet with superintendent from the school district, Javier, as well as the president of the board for District 14, talked to them about an upcoming joint meeting that we had. We had the NADA meeting, which me and Councilman Teeter showed up to and learned a lot about. We go to all those meetings, but this one seemed like they talked a lot about Commerce City. We had the groundbreaking for North Range crossings. This one I want to put out extra credit for Mr. Douglas, was the Eagle Street Trick-or-Treat Event. Him and his wife do an outstanding job of working with the kids over at the high school and make sure that there's opportunity for kids in the community to go and trick or treat. We had the first transit Halloween event, a huge employer in our community. And it was interesting to find out that they're open 24/7 every day of the year. They outsourced some of the RTD bussing and nice company and they do a nice thing for residents with their Halloween event as well. We had our joint meeting with District 14 and the city. A lot of what we talked about was how well District 14 is moving forward on improvements. Also, we talked about the need to get them off dead center and move forward on the urban renewal negotiation on the tax district side, to get that last piece for the urban renewal solidified. We did receive a letter from them today, and I think we're getting close. So I do need to make sure that we schedule a urban renewal authority meeting soon. I think we're looking at next week before the study session, according to the city manager. We had the Bison Roundup, that happens once a year, another important part of our community. The refuge is up to about 150 bison now, with the new ranges that they were able to put in. They can go up to over 200 in that 250 range. They just received 30 new buffalo from the Bison Range in Wyoming, Montana. And those 30 are now out at the refuge and they're not looking to ship any off the refuge this year. But a very interesting event to be able to see, the corral systems they use was designed by a lady that, from CSU, keeps the animals, because they're wild, in a round circular pattern and they don't get much human contact. Everything's done from catwalks unless they have to do blood or skin sampling. And it's still really cool the way they set it up to keep it from being harmful because of the wild nature of the animals. We had that new rec center tour I talked about earlier. Myself and Mr. Bullock went down to the Irondale Neighborhood Meeting that took place at Traditions the other night. And then last night was the Veterans Day Dinner. A couple of churches, the Rotary Club, participate and put together a Veterans Day Dinner for our community every year. It was, it was great to be there. Last night, there was a lot of veterans. They all got up, told us what they did in the military, what duties they had, when they served. And there was one gentleman, was there from World War II and was 99-years-old, came out to have dinner, one of our residents. But you go to those kind of things and it's important that you participate and see the people in your community that today, they seem like they're senior, average senior citizens, but what they did in their youth to help protect our rights in this community and to keep us a free nation is unbelievable. So I want to thank all of our veterans again. There was a Stillwater Spa grand opening. I need to thank the Mayor Pro Tem for being there and handling that for me, as I was unable to attend that one, and any of the other council that was there. Last but not least, I think it is important for me to thank the candidates, several of them that are here tonight, one of them that's not, which is Tanya Russell, for making it a point, to learn about the job, to show up at the meetings, to put yourself into our presence and see what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I think that is very helpful for the residents. I think it's very helpful for you as candidates. There are going to be four new people up here, and tomorrow's the day, we're going to find out which four that will be. I will tell you right now that I know, there's no doubt in my mind, I can work with any of the candidates. Whoever gets elected, we will welcome them onto this council. That's the choice of the voters in this community. And again, I will also mention that it's important to those who don't get elected, because there are, I believe, nine people running for four seats, that you continue to stay involved. Don't lose your drive and ambition to participate in your community. There are plenty of boards and commissions and other duties, we would like you to stay engaged. But with that said, good luck to each and every candidate that has taken the time to get their affidavits filled out and to run, campaign and meet and talk with the residents of this community. Because I know just in the last month or so, you have learned a lot more about what the people's desires are, because you're out there talking to them. You know what roads need to be fixed, you know where there's problems, you know where things are going good. So good luck to each and every one of you, and I look forward to serving with the four new members that will be elected tomorrow. One of the things I think is important to add is after tomorrow, we will have four council members elect. And I've talked to the city manager, we want to make sure that you're invited to participate in all of the council activities between the election and the day that you're sworn in. That matters, because there's a lot happening and it happens quick. And one of those things is our legislative dinner that will be coming up. So for those that do successfully get elected tomorrow, the city will be reaching out to you and getting you a calendar of events that we want you to participate in up to that point where you're sworn in. So we will have not just a gang of nine, there'll be 13 of us for a short period of time. So I'm sure everybody will be watching closely the elections. It's just not our community that gets four new council members. We have a school, School District 27J has a lot of candidates out there, and we'll see who shows up and what the residents decide for that election. 14 also has an election. We know Brighton, some of my colleagues will change. City of Brighton will have a new mayor, City of Northland will have a new mayor, Aurora's city council is going to change quite drastically this year, and there's a pretty heated race for mayor in Westminster. So it'll be a learning curve, not just in our own home, but I'll have a learning curve with a lot of my mayors that I work with will also change over. So with that said, thank you all for being here tonight. We do have some more meetings. Does anyone on council have anything they'd like to add to my report before I adjourn the meeting?
Wanted to talk about it, but I'm not going to.
Why do you even bring it up then? If you were going to talk about it, now you're not going to. Anybody else? If there be nothing further to come before the city council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned.